Good evening, welcome to the meeting of the Wareham School Committee. Today is Thursday, November 18th, 2021. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast by WCTV and an audio recording is being made by Jamie Wickston. Let's start by rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to address the committee tonight in public participation? I don't see anyone, so we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is good news. Would anyone like to share any good news? Dr. Shaverhood?
Yes, thank you. I'm pleased to announce that one of our own school committee members has been named Coach of the Year for tennis. Congratulations, Mr. Sweat. And it's based on the selection of excellent character, impact of students and community and coaching credentials. So, thank you very much and we're very proud of the success of your teams.
Thank you. Let me make it abundantly clear. This was a team award. I could never have done it without Mr. Palladino and his students.
Well, she stole my good news. That was my good news too, so. Anyone else? All right. We will move on to the first item on the agenda, which is the Superintendent's Contract Amendment. There is an amendment proposed to the current superintendent's contract. We did meet an executive session to discuss it, so unless someone has any other discussion, we will move to a vote. No? Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Move approval of the superintendent's contract known as Attachment A.
Thank you.
Second?
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Okay. Three, zero, two. Next on the agenda is superintendent's contract. So also during executive session, we discussed a newly proposed contract for the superintendent. So again, is there any discussion to be had before we vote here in open session? If not, I would ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Okay, so three, zero, two. So both of those items, because they are approved, considered approved by the school committee based on those votes, we're just going to take a moment. Those documents, I have them here. We're going to take a moment to sign them before we go forward with the meeting. It'll just take a minute. You could just sign those and keep that down there. Next on the agenda is our report from our student representative, Adrian. Welcome, Adrian.
Thank you. So as the Thanksgiving holiday rolls around, just like every year, clubs around the school are collecting donations for Thanksgiving baskets. Student council, I believe, has three baskets. Honor society has two, and I know Key Club is collecting donations as well, but I'm not sure how many baskets they have. Spirit Week is also starting, as you guys may have heard. The seniors and juniors are very competitive this year, and they have spent a lot of money on tuna and soup today, so it'll be very close.
Oh, we heard it was peanut butter. Is that tomorrow?
Peanut butter is tomorrow.
What does that mean?
So each day, there are specific food items that are worth double the points. So you can bring in food items any day and there'll be an additional point, but for tomorrow, peanut butter will be worth an additional point, or two points.
So guess where you're going on your way home, April?
Just for the record, because I'm addicted to peanut butter, what happens to the peanut butter once it's brought in?
All of the food items are donated. So yesterday, the scores for seniors and juniors were very close. Seniors were actually behind by, I believe, five points, but today, we really stepped up our game and we got ahead by, we gained an additional 400 points, so we're at 569 right now. Juniors are at 381. Sophomores are at 176. Freshmen are at 165, and eighth grade is at 83 points. And the themes for each day, so Wednesday was Decades Day. Today was, why am I already blanking? It happened today.
Cowboys versus aliens?
Yes, Cowboys versus aliens. Thank you. Tomorrow is country, no, yes. Today was Cowboys versus aliens. Tomorrow is country versus, no. I'm sorry. A lot of the themes are very similar. Tomorrow is tourist and safari. Yes, thank you. And then we have Celebrity Day and Color Day. We also have winter sports. Signups went out to last week, I believe, or two weeks ago. There will be, the new Viking block was established today in advisory, where students are able to sign up to go to another teacher for extra help during advisory, so they'll be able to get like extra help or make up quizzes and tests. There's also a new unified basketball team that was established a few weeks ago. They've had a couple wins against DeBor and Kason OR, and they had a very large game a few weeks ago that had a lot of people in attendance. For Spirit Week, we were also going to have a pep rally as usual, but it has been postponed. We're hopefully going to have it in the spring, and that's about it.
All right. Thank you. Sounds like a lot of fun happening over there.
Yep.
Good to have you back.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is the adjustment for the elementary school calendar. Dr. Shaverhood?
Thank you. I would like to ask the committee to please vote for an adjustment for the school calendar. What this would do would be, it would be a half-day release on December 7th and December 15th for the elementary. They would be dismissed at 10:55. The reason this, we're asking for this, it will allow teachers time in their classrooms to pack, and it will also allow time to unpack. As you know, we're planning our move during the week of December 8th, and so providing teachers' time is imperative. We also will be, the principals are planning activities with the students that will allow additional time for teachers to work in their classrooms. So if we could make that one adjustment, that would be very helpful to our staff.
Does anyone have any questions? Can we just clarify, you say the move is December 8th, but the students are not moving until January?
That's correct. We're going to start moving boxes, materials, et cetera, over to the new school. We're starting on December 8th because it will allow teachers time in the new building than to also unpack and have the rooms ready to begin classes on January 3rd.
Okay. If there are no questions, or ask for a motion?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Five, zero, zero.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is report of the business manager.
Few reports for you this evening?
Yes, you do.
Since we missed a meeting from the storm?
Storm, yeah.
Okay, so in front of you or in your packet, you had Septembers. Sorry, thank you. I always tend to forget that. You have your September, year-to-date budget report through September. Percent remaining is just over 74 percent, almost 75 percent, which makes sense because we're about 25 percent through the school year, through the fiscal year. So I'm tending to really keep a close eye on transportation because the fuel cost just continued to rise. So I'm paying very close attention to that. I mean, you know Joyce, but every day, drive-by gas stations, it can be up 10 cents, 12 cents, 25 cents. So I'm just keeping a real close eye on the fuel, even though that we get a discounted, it still goes up according to what the index says, so.
I was just going to ask that. Is the school in some type of an agreement with the town to buy fuel?
Yes, they use, they get, at the maintenance building, that's where they fill up their buses. Correct, Mary?
Yes.
Yeah. So, and they get a discounted rate compared, they're not paying a retail rate, but there is, the retail rate goes up for us, their rates continue to go up.
Mm-hmm.
So, no one anticipated this, so.
Mm-hmm.
And then, unless you have any questions about September, I'll move right on to October.
Are there any questions? Jeff?
Christine, some of these accounts, the percent remaining is relatively low. Can I assume that that's just timing?
Yeah, it's timing and also things are, could be purchased or encumbered, and that's all we do for the whole year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good question, though, because if you're looking at that, you know, you'll see that just one, for example, you know, any of these contracted services, or you know, we're buying a product that's for the whole year. We might buy it in September, or at least encumber it and then pay for it in October, so, good question.
So your definition of encumbered is essentially my definition of accrued?
Yeah, it's outstanding purchase orders. So the purchase orders, the money's encumbered, so we might order the product, and of course, like everyone else, we're having trouble. Not all the products are coming in right on time or right away, so the money sits there until the product is received and then we'll pay off, pay the bill.
Is it fair to say that something that's encumbered is likely to be paid within 30 days?
Well, it depends. Like, we encumbered some of the utilities, so that would, the answer would be no to that. So, or if we encumbered, say, in transportation, we might encumber the out-of-district part of that or the whole year, and as the bills come in, we pay. Same with, same with tuition, out-of-district tuition, we do the same thing. That way, we know that that money cannot be used for anything else. It sits there, like, almost in the bank until, as the bills come in monthly, or how, they might, some might come in quarterly. We do that when we know what the amount is going to be.
That's interesting. So, there are things you literally can predict for an entire year?
Yes. That would, that would be, my dream would be able to encumber almost everything for the year, because then we would know where we stand.
I understand.
And then as we, as we move along in time, maybe, you know, halfway through the year, we'll analyze it, and as we get towards the end of the year, you know, something might be encumbered that we didn't need to use all of it, or the product never came in and such like that.
So if ultimately the bill is more or less, you know, it's, it acts like an accrual. It just wipes out the encumbrance and puts in the real number.
Right, and puts in the payment to date. So you have your budget, your payment to date, your outstanding purchase orders.
I got it. Yep, thank you.
You're welcome. So October is very similar. I think from September to October, we spent about three and a half percent.
So we don't see on the reports a comparison to the remaining percentage from last year, but is that something that you're looking at?
In other words, you looking at 21 versus 22? Or you want, would you rather have percent remaining or the percent used?
No, no, no. Like, as a, as a comparison to the, say, the previous year. So if I'm looking at, right here, I just happen to be on total decas, right?
Yep.
So they have 77.69 percent of the accounts that are listed under that category.
Right.
Remaining. So are you looking at last year's remaining percentage at that time, and do you track it at all like that?
No, but I could.
No, you don't have to, just, I'm just asking. That's something you're looking at.
Our financial software is a little bit challenging in that you can't run a report in two years.
Mm-hmm.
So it's cumbersome because, I mean, it can be done, it just takes time. It's cumbersome because I'd have to run one for 21 and one for 22, and then put them side by side.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, if we had a different system, maybe we could run two years at one time, so. And if that's something you want to see, maybe I can do that every so often, because it is going to be time-consuming.
Yeah, no, no, no. It's helpful to see this, and I know that, you know, you've added the subtotals, as Jeff had asked, and that is helpful.
Yeah, I understand why you'd want to see it, so.
I think the word challenging is another euphemism for the day. I think user-unfriendly would be a better word.
I was trying to be nice. So, you work with what you have. That's what you do, so.
Right. All right. Does anyone have any questions?
Any more questions?
So I know that you said you were watching, like, transportation with the cost of things. Are you also, is it going to, like, with the office of, the central office moving locations, is that going to adjust where their budget items come from as well, going for, are you watching that?
Yeah, I'm watching that.
Okay.
Yeah. As we move along to, in determining where we're actually going, then, yeah, I'm always looking at that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for asking.
All right. No one has, we can move on to Esser.
So in your packet, you also had Esser 1. That's the shorter one. It shows you what has been purchased to date. So if you look, the original, the amount of the grant was $507,964, and it shows you the categories, subcategories, and cost center, what, where, what school or department that the goods were bought. So expenditures to date is $421,915. Still encumbered is $56,048.86. So there's 30, as of 10/20, there was $30,000 remaining, but I believe that we've spent some of that already, so when I report out next. And the reason why it says expected revenue is because we have to draw that down. After we spend that, we draw it down from the Department of Ed.
Okay.
Is it that easy to draw it down?
To draw it down? Oh, yeah. Yeah. So when you go down to, when you draw it down, you draw it down once a month, I think it's at the end of the month. There's a window for all of our grants. So when you go in there, you put what has been spent to date, and then what you anticipate that you're going to spend for the next month, and they total it out for you. And you request the funds, and then they come through ACH, and we post them against the grants.
Sorry, Madam Chair, can I continue?
No, go ahead, yep.
So, so if it's that easy to draw down, which is the good news, is there any potential for an audit after the fact?
Wait, when you go to do, at the end of the year, when it closes out, you have to do a final report, and it has to balance off to what was actually budgeted for in the beginning, when you first got your grant. So when I say it's easy to draw it down, they're not going to let you draw it down, you know, they let you draw down what you've already spent and what you anticipate, but they don't want you to draw down the whole thing in the first two months.
But you've already said what you wanted to do and had that approved before you have the ability to draw it down?
Correct.
Got it.
Unless there's an amendment somewhere along the line in the life of the grant, then that would change. And then, when the grant is closed, I believe it's 60 days, they do what, they call it an FR1, which is a final report, and you show all your expenditures, and it needs to match up with what was asked for in the grant.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else?
Just Esser 1, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So could I just ask a question about how, well, first of all, some of the numbers are statistic out, like the PPE and cleaning at the middle school?
Mm-hmm.
So is that just a matter of assigning that expense to other lines, other schools? I understand this is just our own, your own internal report.
Correct. So can you ask that question again?
So next to PPE and cleaning at the middle school?
Yes.
Sorry, it's so small. $21,000 was the budget, as it was at all the schools, and it says that expenditure to date is $155.
Well, actually, if you look, the middle school has other, what, when, its supplies and material is all lumped into one on the grant, so it can be any of those things. It can be classroom supplies, tech supplies, PPE, testing. So when you have a grant, there's different categories, so those are particular things all are lumped into one. I just broke it out a little bit so you would know a little bit more detail of what was being spent. So it's all in the same category. So when we go to report it on the FR1, it all is on, I don't know if that's line four or five, I don't remember, I don't have that right in front of me.
So what you're saying is, all of this is supplies and materials?
Correct.
So you just, but for our own use, so, and I appreciate that you gave us this report, because we asked for this, right?
Yeah.
But what you're saying is, perhaps it didn't all get spent at the middle school, so, or I don't know, did it? Did we spend $155,000 on PPE and cleaning at the middle school?
Yes.
Okay.
But what I'm saying is those, it's not, when you write the grant, it's not broken out by school. We break it out by school, so we know what's being spent at what school.
Right. No, I totally understand that. That's why, that's, so that's why I wanted to see this, to see where we were spending this and the other Esser money. So I guess my question then is, why so much more at the middle school? Not that every school doesn't, yeah, I'm just curious why it's so much more there than the other schools? Or has just it all not been accounted for yet?
No, almost all of it's spent, so I don't have the nitty-gritty details, but I could get that for you.
Okay.
Okay?
Um.
I could probably tell you exactly. It just, it fell into the category of PPE.
Okay.
So.
So I guess my other question is, let's say, take another category like general classroom supplies. So we have four schools right now, and general classroom supplies, it just looks like we decided we were going to spend this much money on general classroom supplies, we divided it by four.
Correct.
Okay.
I didn't write the grant, but that's what, that's what it looks like. Same with technology, testing.
Right, right. So I guess my question is, we put these amounts in, and I get it, we have four schools, so we divided it by four, but there are different amounts of students at each school. So the money, it wasn't allocated based on the number of students, it was just allocated based on the number of schools. If I'm reading it wrong, please.
No, that's correct. And then as you move along, it looks like there may, maybe was more of a need at the middle school, but I'd have to get the details on that and get back to you.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. Thank you. And again, I really appreciate this report, this, this and the other, the others.
So the other one is at?
Sorry?
Just a point of clarification.
Sure.
So what it looks like is, you couldn't possibly know from school to school, or even for, for a special education, how much they were all going to spend.
Nope.
So you allocated them an equal amount.
Right.
Which is exactly what I would have done. And so it's, ultimately, there's a reconciliation of who spent what, okay? And because the grant didn't force you to differentiate between the locations.
They don't, yeah.
It would have been frankly, a waste of time for you to try, because you'd have no idea how much they were going to spend. So in the end, what really counts is the actual expenditure.
Right.
And, and so movement between the schools, and even between the categories, would be quite normal. Yeah, I get it, I would have done it exactly the same way.
Really? Because I kind of disagree with that.
That's good, I like disagreement.
Yeah. Because, I mean, it just, again, there are different, different amount of students at each school with different needs in each building, right? The high school is older than the middle school, the, you know, elementary. So I guess, I guess that's why I would disagree with that. I guess that I would, I, maybe we would see some differentiation between the needs at the different buildings and the different students at different levels, because when we move on to the Esser 2, it's, I see that it's the same. So we know the classroom teachers, well, that's a bad example, because that's people, but technology, so there's a, there's a, obviously a lump sum that was dedicated to technology, and then just divided by the four schools. But as we go forward, the new elementary school, maybe their need for technology is much less than the middle school and the high school.
Right. So as we move forward, like, I, we'll take a look at Esser 2 now, which was $1,410,891, and we have spent to date $437,387.45. So when we write the grant, like I said, it's in category. So when you see the classroom teachers, there's only one line in the grant for professional development, because this is just our own internal document, so when we go to report, this is all going to be together. So this gives us some flexibility within, you know, if, if for some reason, we wanted to scrunch that all up and just call it professional, you know, professional staff, I thought you might want to see a little more detail than just how the, the small categories, and then the subcategories under each, like, professional staff. You know, there's only a certain number of drop boxes that you can pull down, then you give the overweight or to the side, the, our definition. So, but when you report, it's all to the same place.
Right. So I appreciate what your, your part in this is, that you're, you're accounting for the financial part, and I totally appreciate that and how this is done. So I guess my question is for Dr. Schwammer, Dr. Shaverhood, about how the, the money is being appropriated in different ways.
I wrote, I wrote Esser 1, so I can respond to how that was done and why we did it the way that we did, if that will help you.
Well, it, anything would be helpful, yes, but.
So basically, what we did was, we took the line items that were available, at least when it was written initially. We took the line items for each school that were under those categories and asked to use, in the LEA, and we replaced that with the Esser to free up LEA in those same categories.
Because we applied the entire amount of Esser 1 to the LEA?
Because supplies, it was for PPE, it was for technology, it was for all of those things that we already had allocated in the LEA.
Mm-hmm.
So, and we were, we were having some financial uproar, and so in order to, to kind of stop that, this grant allowed us to put, remove, take those line items and put them back. Leave them.
Right, I understand what you're saying.
I mean, I wasn't here, but I'm thinking that it's the same idea of Esser 2, when we balanced the budget at the end of, for FY '22, we, you voted to use $660,000 to balance FY '22's budget. I was not here when this budget was written, but if, what Andrea is saying is if they reduced the supply lines in the LEA budget, it was to make the cuts, but not cut, use the LEA to pay for, I mean, to use the Esser 1 funds.
Mm-hmm.
Similar to what we're doing with the Esser 2 funds to offset this year.
Okay. So I'm really not trying to be difficult, I'm just trying to understand it. So let's take Esser 2 technology, just as an example.
Yep.
And let's take Minnet and the middle school. So they're being allocated the same amount of money of, of technology from Esser 2 when the need at Minnet, which will now become the elementary school for technology, might be less than the need at the middle school for technology.
So we could use it at the middle school for technology. This, when this was, this is just for our internal.
Okay.
So it's, no one, no one's, you know, this is for our, so we know what's being spent at each school. That does not mean we can't, if.
So they're being allocated the same amount of money of, of technology from ESER two, when the need at Minnet, which will now become the elementary school for technology, might be less than the need at the middle school for technology?
So we could use it at the middle school for technology. This, when this was, this is just for our internal.
Okay.
So it's, no one, no one's, you know, this is for our, so we know what's being spent at each school. That does not mean we can't, if Minnet has thirty-seven, thirty-seven thousand, five hundred, and the high school needs it, that, there's no one telling us we can't do that.
Right. So it could just as well be one line item for technology.
It could.
Although I appreciate that you have tried to make it...
Yeah, it could be, and that may, maybe that, next time when I present, maybe it'll be simpler if I just present one line. Because that's how it is in the grant. They don't ask us to break it out by school.
Right. No. And again, I, I appreciate the work that you did, and that, that...
I mean, if you think...
You were trying to, to give us what we, you know, what I asked for. And so I appreciate that.
I mean, if you think that that would be simpler, that can be easily done, I just collapse them all into one.
Mm-hmm.
I think that the technology lines, those are technology, um, um, staff. So that's why it's a clean between each, each building, because there are staff that support each building, in ESER two. When you look on the back page, when you look at instructional technology, if, if that's what you're looking at, part of that was to put, you know, to, to purchase, make some purchases to help the technology for students.
Okay. All right. So yes, that is an important difference. Okay.
But ultimately, we just want to know where the money is being allocated to, right? I mean, we want to know how the money's being spent in reality.
Right.
So I know right now, we're just kind of some placeholders, but eventually, will we know exactly where everything's been?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So as of right now, this is just what has been spent to date. So the salaries are, well, I guess they're through the middle of October, so...
So for example, the alt ed, just when I look at the alt ed teacher at Wyam High School, that means ten thousand dollars has been spent to this time, at this point.
Yeah, for the year, because in order to balance the budget last year, this year, I say last year, but you, you voted to use six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So it's not, the salaries aren't even to six hundred and sixty thousand, so ten thousand of whoever that teacher is, is being, is, their salary's coming out of here, ten thousand of it.
So it's not the total salary, it's just that portion from these funds that's being merged with our LEA?
Right. It's not being merged. What we do is, in the payroll, we pay a certain percentage out of LEA and a certain percentage out of...
But their check's not going to reflect where, that's what I mean, that it's coming from, like...
Yeah, they don't see that. They don't see that. It's all in, it's all in the bookkeeping and the business office that sees that. So when you voted to use the six hundred and sixty thousand, we needed to put it some, take it out and put it someplace, to a particular person or a particular position. So then, the, what, what the town voted would be uploaded into the general fund accounting system, which, it, you know, they have to match.
Mm-hmm.
So, but when Kim and I went through this, we knew who, in what account, and for what, who was going to be paid out of here, out of that six hundred and sixty thousand.
Okay. Jeff?
So, my accounting brain says, there's only real, well, there are two problems. I was going to get to the second problem, but I'll just stick with the first problem. Not your problem. You don't merge, as you just said.
No.
This money with the LEA.
Nope.
Never occurs.
Can't.
Right. Maybe even a friendly system would allow you, wouldn't allow you to, but you can't for legal, you can't for legal reasons. The problem is, that that means the analysis of spending that we see is distorted.
Hmm.
By definition, because you're just moving money around, but you're not moving it around in a way that you can see where actually the spending has occurred in total. So it's just the nature of the beast, so to speak, that there's no good, there's no good solution. I'm not too concerned about that.
Mm-hmm.
Because we have to believe that, especially if this ESER money was substituted for money that we'd already approved in the budget.
Right.
We, therefore, we'd already said it's the right priority.
Mm-hmm.
Right? The real issue for me is, and it's more important for ESER two, and really important for ESER three, is I would love to have, and you can't do it, you're going to have to have Dr. Schwarm and Dr. Shaver do this for you. I'd love to be able to say recurring and non-recurring. Because if you're substituting ESER funds for things that these principals are going to be wanting to do every year, forever, and they're just necessary for the functioning of the school, regardless of whether there's a pandemic or not, or whether there's learning loss or not, et cetera, et cetera, then that's a recurring expense, and that'll make me nervous. Whereas if it's non-recurring, like, well, PPE, testing and assessment, hopefully we won't be testing and assessing, and PPE supplies and all that kind of stuff will someday be taken out of your line item.
Let's hope so.
Let's hope so, right?
Let's hope we don't need more PPE coming in.
We'll, we'll call that non-recurring, and when I see that, I say, good, that's exactly what ESER funds should be used for. And in, in some cases, that will even be staff, right? I don't need to say right to you. I hopefully will say right to the two doctors and, and to the principals, right? The problem is, in the last meeting we had, the principals were very reluctant to say any portion of their budget was non-recurring. So that's the real issue. I would love to see for ESER two, the remaining amounts for ESER two, and for ESER three, exactly what is recurring, and exactly what is non-recurrence, recurring spending. And of course, in a sense, capital spending is non-recurring, at least we hope it's not, not recurring every year, maybe every five years or ten years, but I'll let you call that non-recurring if it's a cash...
Like a one-time cost.
Exactly, a one-time cost. Does that, did I make sense?
Yeah, total sense.
And now I need to check with the chair to see if she disagrees with me.
No, no, I agree with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with that part.
Well, I can tell you that the staff is going to be recur, recurring.
And that's...
That's the big nut. And then looking at, I'd have to look at the technology and see if that was a one-time purchase, or, you know, are we going to continue to have to buy that every year? I'd have to, you know, sit down and look at it.
It's not your problem, but it is a problem. Yes, thank you.
Welcome.
Anyone else? I do have one more question, sorry.
Sure.
So, part of these grant monies, right, are to be set aside for, I don't want to use the word remediation, but of students who are...
Learning loss, learning loss.
Yes, yes, who are, who are struggling.
Uh-huh.
So is it safe to say that that is spread out in these areas? And how do we, how do we know that, that money is being spent efficiently, and, not implying that you're not spending money efficiently, I really am not. I just want to know that, are things being evaluated? What, and changed as needed? And has, so how are we doing that?
Right. So what we could do is, we could drill into the spending cost and show you exactly where we have some remediation or assistance with students with learning loss, and then we could show you how we're doing the checks and balances with that.
Mm-hmm.
So we could put together something for you.
Okay.
So you want to see that we have certain, a number of employees for learning loss, and you want to see almost like the outcome of that? Is that what you...
Well, I mean, it doesn't have to be that specific.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
Okay.
Jeff?
But Joyce makes a good point. I would love to have those learning loss employees categorized as non-recurring. Because over the next two years plus, we would hope that we have, the students would have caught up, and that therefore, those people will no longer be necessary, or they will be replaced people who have left, or something like that. Because that's, that's exactly what ESER is intended to do.
Right.
Not add to the operational budget, but deal with the learning loss over a finite period of time, which in this case, we're bas- basically talking two and a half years or so.
Through two thousand twenty-five.
Oh, I thought it was twenty, sorry.
Yeah, so ESER two is through September of two thousand twenty-three, and ESER three is through September of two thousand twenty-four.
Yes, we're on the same page. Yes, yeah.
It's just not a whole year, we just talked about this earlier.
Yes, yes.
Fiscal year versus calendar year versus, you know...
Yeah, that's because of the federal government's fiscal year, yes.
Yes.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay.
I just feel like I need to go back and say that I absolutely understand that there's a tremendous effort by all happening here. But, again, this money is not limitless, or, you know, there, there is an end to it, so we just have to be careful how we're, and be watching how, but absolutely understand that there is a tremendous effort happening right now to reach these children. Just one, I swear, one more question. The summer program that we heard about last week, that was, you know, for learning loss, for kids who needed that extra bit, was that, any of that out of the budget? Or was it all care? Was it all?
All grant funding.
Grant money?
Not ESER, she had different grants outside of ESER.
And Title One, as well. There's money set aside every year, pre-planned, for summer programming.
And there was extra money this year, is that true?
Well, there is an art for next, for this coming summer, yes.
Okay.
But what was left over, that, we were able to then, with combination of the work that Jane does with her grants, and what I had with Title One, we were able to expand it, but what we would normally do. So we offered summer to K through four, through the boost program.
Mm-hmm.
As a result, which was excellent.
Right.
I think it went really well, overall.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
Because she also got money because of COVID, different grants.
Beyond school time and care, and, yeah, okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
I'm off again.
So, does anyone else have any questions on ESER? If not, we'll move on to preschool. Okay.
Just one, one little question. On the flip side of the ESER two page, you have sixty-eight thousand having been spent, I think that's a spent.
It's either spent or encumbered.
Okay.
Encumbered, I think.
On Wyam Middle School, instructional technology, supplies and materials, what was that?
I'd have to go look at the detail, I don't have that with me, unless...
Kim, Dr. Schwarm?
Which grant?
No, this is ESER two.
ESER two.
Oh, ESER two, sorry, I was not involved in that.
I would tell you that I think it's the projection boards.
Okay.
But I would have to...
Good, that's non-recurring.
That is non-recurring. As is the hundred and forty-five thousand at the high school, non-recurring.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to increasing preschool tuition?
You also got in your packet a proposed increase for the preschool tuition. We did not collect tuition last year, and as of today, to date, we have not collected fees. So if you approve this tonight, we're hoping to implement this in January. So if you look at the current full day, it's twenty dollars, asking for a five dollar increase to twenty-five dollars a day. Half day is ten, currently ten dollars, and increased to twelve fifty a day. And at the bottom, it gives you some examples of other preschools in the area, of what they charge.
It's been a long time since I sent a child to preschool, how does...
And there's also a sliding scale, if you see right in the middle, so even if the increase is to twelve fifty a day, they can submit their tax return, and there's a formula that the department, the Department of Ed has built in, and that we use that. So it's either you're paying the twelve fifty, or you're free. And, and it's only the peer models that pay. So this is a special education pre-K with peer model, peer, peer models, I guess you call them. So currently, right now, we have about sixty-five students and twenty-two peers, but there is a waitlist for the peers. So, I mean, this is substantially less than other, any other private preschool program that you would send your child to.
Oh, absolutely, I remember how much it was for Dylan.
Yeah, well, that's what I was going to ask you, go ahead, April.
Uh, no, my other question is, so going into, you said there's twenty-two peers and sixty-five total?
To, total, right.
Okay. So going into the new building, is the capacity going to be higher for preschool? We could have more than that amount of kids for preschool, or is that where we want, where we're comfortable staying? And does the, the total number of peers fluctuate? Like, so say, if we have sixty-five total, do we, for those early intervention, or those special needs kids that need the preschool program, can, how high up, like, what is the maximum number for that, that we could go?
You can't, you can't put a cap on it if, if a child qualifies, yeah.
That's what I'm asking. So the only cap would be on the peer students, in that instance, so...
Correct, because the other students are, are...
It's a necessity, right. So I just didn't know if like, you, I mean, it's almost like a third, close to a third of, you know, the students are the peer model students. So if, if that number with the new school has a higher number of those kids in need, you have less peer interaction, or how do you place them, you know what I mean, strategically with those kids? Or would we have to increase the peer number as well, to not be completely upside down? Is that making sense what I'm asking? It's, it probably sounds clearer in my head.
Well, first, first, you need to address the size. So Dr. Shaver Hood, do you want to talk about that? About that there is no increased capacity at preschool?
Right, there's no, that was one of the discussions we had numerous times with MSBA, trying to expand the number of preschool rooms and kindergarten rooms, and they were, they held fast to our numbers. So we were at five preschool rooms and eleven kindergarten rooms. As we're right now, we have ten kindergarten rooms, and so we can go into six preschool rooms, which we have already. So we are at room capacity. If we have additional students who need the preschool, then depending on the, the ratio, then we would lessen the peer, because we have to keep the certain ratio, but we also have to make space available for students needing the preschool.
So I, I guess my question would be like, as that need, or if that need for those students who, you know, kind of need that early intervention, the, the preschool through, not the peer, like, what is the, the percentage or the ratio, ideally, I guess, would be my, for the special needs verse, like, ratio against the, the peer students? Is it like a two to one? Is it like a three to one?
Um, I...
It's regulated as to how many you can have.
Yeah, that's why, I don't know what the regulation is, so that's why I'm asking. Like, is it normally like, three, you know?
It's seven, seven.
Seven, eight.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Jeff?
So, let me make sure I understand what I'm looking at. Your proposal is for peer students with, without financial assistance, to pay twenty-five dollars a day, and they used to pay twenty.
Correct.
Okay? Which would match Plymouth, basically exactly, yes?
Yes.
But still be substantially lower than Old Rochester. And Taunton is somewhat confusing. What am I supposed to interpret? How am I supposed to interpret what I'm looking at with respect to Taunton?
I would... They only do half-day, I think?
Yes.
They only do half-day, and that's twelve dollars instead of twelve fifty, which is what you're proposing for us.
Correct.
All right. The second question I have is, does, and you may not know the answer to this, but does this, does this rate that you're proposing, is this neutral for us? Or are we losing a lot of money doing, doing it this way?
Well, we are losing a lot of money, because we do not, we do not charge special ed preschool.
That's different, because they're required by law to be provided this service.
It is not a revenue neutral. It's not revenue neutral.
Which means by definition, that someone paying the proposed rate of twenty-five dollars a day is being subsidized by everybody else. I mean, that's just a financial fact.
Mm-hmm.
And so the question becomes, do we want, how much do we want to subsidize? How much do people who are not using this service, I'm not talking about the sped kids, I'm talking about the peer kids, people who have chosen not to use this service, they're subsidizing it through their tax dollars.
Mm-hmm.
So it does seem to me that we ought to think about those people at the same time that we're thinking about the people who are paying this, especially if we're offering financial assistance. especially if we're offering financial assistance.
Which we are.
Which we are. So if Old Rochester's charging forty-five and we're offering financial assistance so that it may only cost someone twenty-five, but someone who can afford to pay forty-five and, and doesn't need to be subsidized, which is exactly what twelve, which is exactly what twenty-five dollars does, then we're charging too little. It's not like we're a for-profit business and we're getting a bonus based on the profit of this. This is, this is, all comes down to taxpayer dollars.
I, I would agree, but when we also look at user fees, we're in the same situation because we do the slider fee or the free and reduced for students that can't afford, when we did the transportation fee, we had students that were riding for free if they qualified. But yet we had approximately twenty-four percent of our other students paying the transportation fee.
Yeah, Mary wants to.
But in the long run, it's actually going to benefit us because these students that are attending, the peer models or the peer partners, are going to benefit from the instruction that they are getting from certified teachers versus, you know, like preschool, just a regular preschool in town. And so it may prevent us from having, provide, providing other services in the future.
I agree with everything you said, but we're, but it's apples and oranges. You're a hundred, educationally, you're a hundred percent correct. But I'm not talking education. I'm talking about, is this the right charge for a service that we're providing?
So we're only talking though about a pool right now of twenty-two children?
Possibly.
Possibly, unless they qualify for some type of tuition assistance.
They could.
And is that twenty-two only going to go down? I mean, or?
It won't go down.
No. I don't think it will go down.
There will be a waitlist. It will not go down.
Okay.
Yeah, I think there's a long waitlist, isn't there?
And the private preschool is charged significantly more for less qualified, as Mary said, instruction. Where it's, I mean, they're getting some instruction. I'm not downgrading or saying anything negative about preschool teachers. I know that they, they do a lot, but I'm just saying for, for what Mary, I think, was saying is that they wouldn't necessarily, if those early interventions are put in place through the preschool, they may be able to catch them up where they wouldn't require those kind of additional cost services as they stay through our school system, I think, right? Was that what she was saying?
But again, if you apply the same percentage that we saw when we charged bus fees, right? Was the percentage seventy, close to seventy-five percent of students were not paying the bus fees because they were eligible for some type of assistance. So if you apply the same percentage, we're talking about five or six kids in total? Because none of the special ed students pay? Is that how I understood it? Right?
That's correct.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think people understand the argument I'm making. All those educational arguments I agree with a hundred percent.
No, I understand what you're saying, but you're.
But let's, let's take, let's take, how do we pay for education in this town?
Taxes.
We pay for it through property taxes, right? So every child who comes into the high school or the middle school or the elementary school, it costs approximately the same thing. Now, some charges cost a little more, some cost a little less. But the point is, it costs about the same thing. But guess what? Property taxes are not all equal, right? So, and that's a way of making it progressive, right? And what I'm saying is, we're, we're essentially giving away a very valuable service and some of the people we're giving it away to could easily pay twice as much. And Old Rochester is proof of that, okay? And some of them will need financial assistance. And I don't know whether financial assistance is available through Old Rochester, but I a hundred percent agree that we should be providing financial assistance. But I don't agree that we should be charging less for available valuable services that some people can afford to pay.
So you want to make a proposal to make it more?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, it's just, I feel because during COVID, right, there was a longevity there where a lot of people were in hardships. There's a lot of our families who were, you know, lost their jobs, right?
Completely agree.
We have not, we've given that freedom there. Now we're all of a sudden saying, oh, by the way, here we are. I'm going to give you two months now to pay. I just want to make sure and feel that I don't want to increase it by double. I don't feel like that's fair. I just don't for our Wareham families. I feel like an increase that matches Plymouth with the same demographics. I feel even Plymouth, if we match it, they may even have a higher income than Wareham. We're matching it to Plymouth and I just feel like that's fair.
Someone asked, let me ask you a fundamental question. Do you think the financial assistance process that families go through that determines how much they pay for this service, do you think it's fair?
Well, that's not, I don't know if that's up to me, that sliding scale. I mean, I think that's a state.
Who, who?
It's a state.
It's state, man?
It's a state given. It's given to us by the state.
Well, we have to execute it. We have to implement it.
No, some don't.
So we, excuse me?
We don't. Some, some don't have a sliding scale.
Okay, it's based on income, yes? Okay. So if someone has a very low income, no matter what we say the amount is, they're not going to pay that, correct?
Right, if they qualify, then they won't pay.
If they qualify. So I think you're reacting to the absolute number that I'm saying is too, too, too low. And you're ignoring the fact that we have in fact a financial assistance plan, which means people who have low income will never pay that amount.
And I also think, Mr. Swett, we can rethink about our, you know, costs next year as well. I think that this is for, you know, this year as we reintroduce the payment process into the preschool program.
Mary, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, go ahead. You were first.
I, I was just going to say that I know when I was running the preschool program that I ran into the situation where families just barely were over the amount. You know, so that caused them to struggle.
So when I, when Dylan was younger and I was really struggling and in need of great state assistance whenever possible because I was on the verge of homelessness, I've had a lot of financial adversity to overcome when Dylan was little. And sliding scale fees, they look at everything pre-tax. They don't look at what you're taking home. They never looked at what I was paying for rent. They never looked at what I was paying for utility. They would look at what my income was, not looking at my bills. So these families that they may, as Mary said, be just over that threshold, on paper, it looks like they may be able to afford X, Y, Z a month. But in reality, it's twenty-five dollars for daycare or food. It's, you qualify, like I didn't qualify for assistance, even though I was on the verge of losing my home. So I had to, you have to get creative and it's, it's really hard to be in those situations because it's, it's, to me, it's embarrassing to put your financial situation out there for these things to do. So it, it does become really kind of, it's not as black and white, I think, as, as it looks like it would be on paper. Because they're looking at everything before any of these families' taxes are taken out. And that's not what people are living off of. That's not what they're saying.
What you're really saying is the financial assistance process is unfair.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And as long as it's unfair, then I agree that we need to keep the rate low.
Kevin?
Let's go to move the question.
Do you want to make a motion to approve the proposed tuition?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Thank you.
I'm just going to stay right here.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the report of the superintendent.
Yes, thank you. I would ask that the committee please accept the following, the donation from Staples to the Wareham High School. There were PPE supplies and classroom supplies. I would ask you to please accept that gift.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
Next, I would ask to please approve the bill warrants and payroll as listed in your newsletter.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Thank you. And we'll move on to the budget presentation. While they're getting set up, we'll just go over the budget process again. So last week, we had the all-day budget meeting where we met with all the principals, directors, superintendent. Tonight is the presentation of the budget. In two weeks, December second, is the public hearing where we'll meet with the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee jointly at the middle school. And then on December fifteenth, which is a Wednesday, we'll have a Wednesday meeting and we'll vote on the budget that night. And no one is listening to me, so it's okay.
I heard you every word.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I could probably recite it right back.
You're the one that didn't know the date. I had to tell you the date, so that's why I was doing that. Don't worry, I'll remind you.
It wasn't the date that was the problem.
Yeah.
Okay, so Joyce did a great job of explaining the budget process and the dates. So we'll move right along. So she mentioned the budget workshop on November ninth. We, we, the budget request was thirty-six million, one sixty-one, nine seventy. That included new staff, additional monies and supplies and materials. It represented what the principals and directors, central office believe what was necessary for the needs of our student. Uh, I just said that the end of the budget means you would, and this would represent an eleven percent increase over the FY twenty-two budget, which we know is not fiscally possible. Uh, this is the staff requests by the high school, the middle school, elementary district, total of three thirty-one, four sixty. They requested these because they felt it necessary to fully support the students in both academically and emotionally. So in FY twenty-one, our final budget was twenty-nine million, four hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven. In FY twenty-two, we, our proposal was thirty-two million, five oh seven three, three seven three. And the town funded thirty million, eight forty-three, oh seventy-three, which was almost, close to a five percent increase over FY twenty-one. So with, with all the cuts that we have made, we made, we cut the new, new staff that was requested. We cut supplies. We cut some technology. Every department, every school cut to bring us down to thirty-five million, oh thirty-five, ten. And we are requesting the thirty-two million, three eighty-five, two two six based on using nine hundred thousand dollars of circuit breaker to offset the thirty-five million. And in anticipation, we have a five percent increase from the town over last year, over this year, current year. They gave us close to five percent last year also, so. Then we looked at the net and the non-net. Basically, it's take out the transportation for the non-net. So again, the draft that we're asking for is thirty-two million, three eighty-five, two twenty-six. Now, this just shows per pupil expenditures, Wareham over the last three years versus the state average. And we are a little bit above the state average, but we also have, our special education is about twenty-five percent over the state average and it continues to rise. So I think that that's, that is why that we are, our per pupil expenditure is above the state average.
You're saying it's all Melissa's fault?
Well, I didn't really want to say that, but, no, she does a great job.
I'm just kidding.
I was kidding back. Uh, this is just the projected, district information for projected enrollment for next year. And the, the average class sizes will range from the upper teens to the low twenties based on this projected enrollment. This just is the population student makeup. Language learners, ELL, students with disabilities, high needs and economically disadvantaged. This shows the Wareham Public Schools employees over the last four years. And if you look at the last column, which is, it says two thousand twenty-one, that actually was certified on October first of two thousand twenty-one, so this is actually FY twenty-two. This is certified by the, by DESI, it's what we call EPUMS. So it doesn't have every, all, the total employees. It's just certain categories that we report out on. You, you'll see this administration, instructional, instructional support, paraprofessional, special ed, medical and clerical. So we all know that there's, we have more employees than that, but this is all, this is what is required that Robin certifies on October first and sends into the Department of Ed. The next slide just shows the history of, and the proposed budget for the major accounts. So you have administration, instruction, people services, operations and maintenance, insurance, fixed access and programs with other districts. So that's the comparison from twenty-one to the proposed budget in twenty-three.
April, I see that you have a question. We'll just wait.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just didn't know it was on that particular slide. What does?
Andrew, you.
What does the programs with other districts include?
That's out-of-district tuition. And it's also if our students go to Bristol-Aggie or Upper Cape.
Okay, so that's all included in that because that seems like the biggest jump.
It is, yeah. That's out-of, any kind of out-of-district tuition, most of that's special education, but it's also for any of our students who go to Bristol-Aggie.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
It's a lot. So if we're looking at the pie here, you can see that the majority of our budget is instruction. So if you look from year to year, we'll go back, we'll go to the next one. You'll see that in twenty-two, instruction, can't read that from here, was seventy percent. In twenty-one, it was seventy-two percent. So if you look at the operations, it, it went up ever so slightly, but I, that's from the utilities use. That's what would fall into that category. And also, any of the maintenance that we do on the buildings would fall into that category. And you also see that there was a slight increase in pupil services, which is transportation, athletics. It's the three thousand series. So it's, it's for pupil services that are not instructional. So back to the numbers again. So the actual working budget for FY twenty-three is thirty-five million, thirty, thirty thousand, five hundred and ten dollars. As I alluded to earlier, it eliminates all the requested positions from the principals and departments, reductions of supplies and materials for all schools and central office. And it's a reduction of five existing FTE staff members. So this is budget assumptions. So if we, if we assume that we apply circuit breaker funds of nine hundred thousand and the town contribution of five percent from the town, that the amount requested is twenty, thirty-two million, three eighty-five, two twenty-six. That's a five percent increase over FY twenty-two. And the budget deficit still exists at a million, seven forty-five, two hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Is that even after you've applied?
Yes.
Are you ready for questions?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the last slide.
Okay. Go ahead, April.
So the five full-time employees that you're looking at reducing, are you, is that, you're hoping, is that projected retirement? Would that be layoff? Is that combination?
Can you say that again? I'm sorry.
On the, the last slide where it said the reduction of five existing full-time staff members?
Mm-hmm.
Is that the reduction from retirement? Is that layoff? Is that like, what is, how is that being determined, the reduction of five?
That was, at each, at each of the building levels, they determined staff reductions, staff, current staff members.
So like classroom teachers? So like classroom teachers? You're just, it just, there's no general?
Just general, yeah.
Right now, we, we know that there's X number of people that have put in papers to retire. Those have been accounted for in the budget. From here to the end of this year, if there are additional people who retire or leave, we will look at, is there a need to replace them? That would be the first question. And then if we don't replace them, then it would save a person that was going to be let go.
Because we very well could easily get somebody to tell us in January or even May that they're going to retire.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I just hate seeing the word staff reduction when I know how dedicated our staff is and how much, I mean, if each of the schools is requesting additional staff and now we have to deny that and then look at reducing existing, that's, it's just not good for the kids, in my opinion. I know, but, I know the budget is a, is a, it's the bane of everyone's existence, but it's, it just makes me sad to think about.
Jeff?
So Dr. Sheverhood, nineteen, 2021, the percentage spent on instruction was 72.8%. In 2022, it dropped to 70.4%. And in 2023, it's dropped to 69.3%. That's, you know, that's a trend. Why are we spending a declining percentage of our budget on instruction?
I think you have to look at pupil services and the cost because that's gone up every year. That's increased, so it went from, in FY '21, it went up from, it was 7.8 and in the draft budget, it's 9.3. So that's increased. When you look at operations, it also, well, it's, it's gone up 0.5%.
But we've also had a, admittedly a small, but administration has also increased its percentage.
Right. So, you know, I, I think we're seeing rise in utility cost. We're, we're projecting for 25% in, increase in our utility cost. We know that the fuel's gone up. We've had to, we have some negotiations in pupil services. So, I mean, we can drill in for you, but overall, we've had a rise in cost in other places. We also have lost some veteran staff and have replaced them with staff of, at a lower step.
That's probably true every year, isn't it?
There's been some years we haven't, haven't lost too many staff through retirement.
Christine, the FY '23 pie chart that we're looking at, that, that includes the five people that will either not be replaced or laid off? Me, excuse me, it has taken into account the savings associated with?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. I guess the, the one thing that I would like to see sooner than later, and certainly before the budget hearing, is a, is a how, a breakdown of how we're spending that 1.7 million. And in a perfect world, it would all be categorized as non-recurring because we know that we got one more year after that for that kind of spending. And after that, the money simply doesn't exist. So a breakdown of how we spend that 1.7 million.
The deficit?
The deficit, which is going to be covered by ESER, right?
If that's what?
If that's what the committee wants.
Well, that's what you're proposing. I assume there's nowhere else we're going to find 1.7 million, is there?
That's true.
Okay. So your proposal, in addition to this, is that we cover the deficit with ESER for next year of totaling 1.7 million?
Yes.
I mean, if you have a different solution, I'm, I really want to hear it.
We wish this was a different solution, but I don't think that there is. Unless the town gives us 15%.
Exactly.
And that's not feasible.
So to, to get my vote, I guess, is what I'm saying, is I need to see that that 1.7 million of spending is spending that won't, won't exist a couple of years from now. Because otherwise, we're doing exactly what districts are being told not to do, which is creating a fiscal cliff in two years.
I just want some clarification. I think it's 1.1 because 600,000 was used for this, do you write?
I think what Christine said was 1.7.
Right. The deficit, he's talking about the deficit, not the amount that we've taken, taken out of the grant.
Okay, got it.
So when it's all said and done, which were, you know, the budget assumption is we use $900,000 from circuit breaker and the contribution from the town's going to be 5%, there's still going to be, exists a deficit of 1.745,284.
Got it.
So I, I believe Jeff is asking for, that if the intent of the committee is to use the ESER funds to balance this, you want to see what, you want to see a list of?
Would you like me to elaborate again?
Yes.
I'd like to.
I thought I had it.
I'd like to see exactly how we're going to spend that 1.7 million. In the hopes that it will give me some comfort that that spending won't be necessary in two years. Because like April, I, you know, I was listening to the principals at the last meeting. The last thing I want to do is create a catastrophe now. We're already not giving them the staff they've requested. So if we just cut 1.7 million from the existing budget, it would be a disaster. But it will also be a disaster if we think that in two years, we're going to have that 1.7 million. We're simply not. So somehow, over the next couple of years, we need to figure out how we're going to reduce expenses and not at the expense of kids.
Can I ask a question? When you, when you say 1.7 million of ESER funds, are we talking about ESER III now?
Yes.
And the remaining balance of ESER II.
ESER II.
There's 330,000 in ESER II that would be earmarked for next year.
Okay. April, did you have another question? Or was it Kevin? Somebody over here right there? No, okay.
So now the next step is we're going to continue to explore, you know, additional staff reductions, explore some reductions in transportation and additional reductions in supplies and materials.
I don't know, how, if we have a waiting list and not enough buses now, how are we going to reduce transportation to accommodate the students in the town? That seems like.
We're exploring different options of, if we're going to have walkers versus non-walkers, we, you know, change, change maybe, you know, we're just looking at different scenarios. Not that we're going to take it away, we're just looking at different scenarios that might help us save money.
Jeff?
Since Kevin and I are on the budget committee, I think, to be clear, it would change the radius of where we pick up. And that's not a great idea because it includes places where it's not safe to walk. So it's the last alternative that I personally want to look at. But it would save well over $100,000 to do that, but we'd be putting kids at risk.
Right. Right now, we bus, we bus one mile. We have the ability to go to two miles. And then, so what we've looked at is what would the ramifications of that be? For every bus run that you, you cut or you reduce, you save approximately $40,000 a bus. So if you would reduce four buses, you'd have $160,000. The thing that we're really concerned about is if we would go to two miles, what that would do with our elementary walkers and where they would be walking from? If that would be in a place that we could comfortably move it forward? At this time, I would tell you, no, we cannot. So what we've also looked at is if we went to three runs, three bus runs, just the preliminary on that, and what I mean by three runs would be a start time for high school, start time for middle school and a start time for elementary. What that would do is it would reduce the runs preliminary, but it would increase the hours that our drivers would be driving. So there might not be a balance of that. But every run that we would save in, in district run, then we would hope to bring back an out-of-district run and reduce that. One of the things we're also looking at in the out-of-district runs is, is it cost-effective to bring it back into district? Are we spending, would we match what we're spending in the out-of-district runs? Or would we save money? And so those are all, some of the questions that we're looking at in the transportation to see if we can be more effective.
April?
So my hometown, every, the, where the school was, was centrally located. So every single point was at least, was two miles. Like you could go from one end from the school, two miles. So what they ended up doing was only the elementary school kids got buses and once you got to the junior, senior high school, there was no more busing, just for that. But we don't live in a town that's a two-mile central radius. You know, you have kids that live in like the Shang area that would never be able to walk to school. And even with mine at Ave, with the new school building, it's not a huge residential, I mean, there is residential there, but I don't foresee anyone being to walk to the elementary school. I, I just still don't know that move at a two-mile or even, like Jeff said, putting students at risk with the, on my side of town, there's no sidewalk where I live on Main Street. There's none. So, you know, my son has walked to school before he had his license and it was nerve-wracking to me because there was, you know, it's not necessarily that the students aren't being safe and doing what they're supposed to do, but drivers aren't paying attention. So I definitely, like Jeff wouldn't feel comfortable, I don't think, having that as an option for the kids. This is just, this is really disheartening that we'd have to even explore, that we even have to think about this possibility because the cost of everything has gone up so much and that just the kids end up suffering. And I hope that when the budget is being presented to, you know, the town for this whole thing, that they realize that it's the kids that will be suffering if this doesn't go through.
Jeff?
So one point on the out-of-district runs. I would love to see that brought into our department. But to do that, we'll have to put on the, on the town meeting warrant, some specialty buses because we don't have the vehicles now to transport those out-of-district runs. That's not something that's out of question at all. In fact, I would encourage us to do that. But it, it would, we couldn't just simply say, okay, Marie, go get some drivers and let's do it. She will need the vehicles to do it as well.
Are there any grants for that, for the need for, like, to, to bring, if you have a district that's not, you know, subbed out to a private company to request or to help offset the cost of a special needs vehicle for out-of-district ones?
I believe there is some grants out there. I don't necessarily think it's sped versus regular, but there's a lot of stipulations and qualifications in order to get those grants. So I, I know Marie's been looking at different grants that could possibly help us in exactly what you're saying. But a lot of them are, we're not, we're not eligible for. It, it looks on the surface we are and then you dig deep and it's all these things that make, would make us eligible that we aren't. So, you know, Marie's doing a great job and she continues to look everywhere where we can save a little money or even get a grant to help out pay for, you know, pay for things that we need in the transportation department. So it has, it's looked at, you know, it's constantly, I would say.
And are there any upcoming or descending, do we have somebody like within the schools, like looking at, like for some of the specialists, like I know that the, the budget request, like the high school's looking for like a French teacher or a language, are there any sort of like grants that would cover part-time language or anything? Is like, do we have a dedicated person somewhere in the district that is literally like just looking for as much free money as we can find? And if not, why don't we? Like, do we have a grant writer specifically in the district to try to help us?
No.
Okay.
Mary, oh, did you raise your hand?
No. Yeah, I, I mean, I can comment on that. I don't think it's worth the, the money to pay someone to do that, at least full-time. We usually get a notification from the state where most of our grants come from, right?
Yep.
So, yeah.
Yeah, some are competitive and, and some are. Entitlement, thank you.
Yep.
So we, we constantly get those emails and, you know, we dig deep to see if that, if we're, if we're eligible for them and we, we go for what we think we could get. But you don't always get them either, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just one, just one comment to reiterate what Jeff said also. So I feel like we're kicking the can down the road and we don't want to obviously put undue hardship on this year with saying we have to make 1.7 million in cuts. But I do think we'd have to come up with a more tangible plan. What's our weaning off plan in the next two years? So if we can have some maybe concrete ideas for how, or ways that we can reduce that over the course of a couple of years, whether it's through retirements or some, or maybe it's future reductions based on the fact that we don't need the same number of support staff, maybe if we're farther away we get from COVID. But if we could see that, that would be helpful, at least for me, to then say, okay, I can, I can hold my nose and vote for the 1.7 million deficit this year using the ESER fund. But because we have a plan in place, if we can start to work on that as well, that'd be great.
All right, well, thank you to everyone who worked hard to bring this. Thank you, Christine. Thank you, Jeff and Kevin.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sheverhood and Dr. Schwann and everyone who had a part in this. So going forward, Christine, can you just tell us a little bit about? So there are going, there's going to be work done between now and December 2nd.
What direction would you like us to go in?
Well, I'd like to find 1.7 million dollars, right?
Yeah, so I think what we're going to be looking at doing is to answer your question about how we would approach the 1.7 over the next several years. Because we know that we have X amount of dollars that will cover us through the next two years with the ESER funds, but after that, it doesn't exist. So how are we going to address that for you? We've started looking at the retirements, projected retirements. And we'll start combing into the other expenses to see where we can come up with a, a plan. Of course, it's, it's not in stone, but it would give a pathway to meeting the 1.7.
Okay. Of course, then my number, the number side of my brain says, this is why it's so important, for me anyway, this is why I ask so many questions about how we're spending the money.
Mm-hmm.
Because someday, we'll have to take it back or, you know, it won't be there, so.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. So we will move on to the report of the school committee and start with the report from the policy review committee, which is Kevin.
Sure. So we met to, to look at these three policies for today's meeting. The first one is the funding proposals and applications. And no changes were recommended by the policy review committee on this. So we would encourage the committee to accept that as, as is.
So moved?
Second it.
All right. Does anyone have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain, 5-0-0.
Okay, the next one was FileDBA, the budget policy. And there were basically two changes. They were highlighted in your packet, but under Part B, we added the word combined public hearing. We added combined, that did not exist with the finance committee and selectmen. And this was implied, but we just added it in to make it explicit.
Okay.
The bigger change is in, under item number three. This was at the recommendation of the superintendent and business manager that the superintendent or designee will be authorized to replenish the sub-accounts to transfer up to $25,000 or 5%, whichever is less. That is a change. It previously was 5,000, so it is an increase. But these budgets are very large. $25,000 sounds like a lot of money, but in some of the budgets, it really is a small percentage. And it would free up, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Christine or Dr. Sheverhood, but would, sometimes they get held up in the warrant process and at times we can meet for money they need to transfer, this will allow them to make those transfers.
Is that amount? Is that amount not set by law?
No, it's set by the committee.
Okay.
And the committee voted eleven, I would recommend that.
Sorry, they voted what?
I think it was eleven.
Oh, Jeff?
I, I just, I completely agree with, with what Kevin said, and I think the key phrase there is "whichever is less." So, if you have a small count, small account, meaning a small amount in a certain account, you can't take twenty-five thousand out of there if it's, if it's twenty percent of that account. So, I think by adding that phrase, it's a perfectly reasonable change to the policy.
Okay. Those are the only two changes?
For, for that policy?
For that policy, yeah.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve? So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? Five-zero-zero.
And, and the last policy that we were bringing to the table today was our policy on COVID-related issues, and we had a pretty long discussion on this, but it was, we decided on the ninth-to-vote that we should suspend this policy at this time. Doesn't mean we couldn't bring it back if, God forbid, the pandemic rears its ugly head again, but we believe we have things in place right now that don't necessarily require this policy anymore at this time. So, it was recommended to suspend.
Okay.
Second. Move.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? Five-zero-zero. All right. Elementary school update? Dr. Shaverhood or Jeff would like to?
We're moving right along. Furniture's moving in. We're on schedule to move students over on January 3rd. We're still putting some pieces together. We expect work to continue, and we can't wait to get the occupancy permit, so we can start bringing our staff and others through the building.
And, and that certificate of occupancy is, is literally being held up by fire alarm devices. Obviously, they're very important. The Fire Department and the, and the Building Inspector would not think of granting us a certificate of occupancy without them, and they literally are, we're waiting to have them arrive. We all know the, the stories about the supply chain problems. We've been extremely lucky on this project, that we haven't been hit by it to a greater extent. So, other than that, things are going well. The only thing I would add to what the Superintendent said is, we have decided to delay the ribbon-cutting and inviting everybody in to see the building until the building is exactly the way we want people to see it. We don't want people to see it with old cafeteria furniture, for example. And, and that's just one obvious example. We've got a lovely mural, for example, that's coming into the lobby, and we want to make sure that's been installed. I can assure you, the building is beautiful, and, and it is an extraordinary value for this town, and well-deserved, but you may not get to see it until maybe something like March or April, but it'll be worth the wait.
With that said, students will visit the building ahead of time and-
In small groups.
You're just talking about the public that's not, I just want to make that clear.
Yes.
Okay.
And education will begin before the ribbon-cutting.
Right, right. Which apparently happens in most other schools like this, right?
Kids will be going home and talking to their parents about this extraordinary building, and that's what we want.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. All right. Thank you. All right. The last item on our agenda is the Superintendent's evaluation. This, I guess, is what, my third time doing this, and every single time, I'm just going to start out by saying that no other employee is evaluated in such a way in public. She is not given the courtesy of seeing her evaluation before this meeting, which I disagree with, but we're following the process that is set out for us by state law. In the past, we, the Wareham School Committee, we've talked about ways to improve this process, so hopefully in the future, we will move towards that. So, with that said, four members of the School Committee prepared an evaluation, and I collected those evaluations and prepared a compilation. Of those four evaluations that were submitted, all rated the Superintendent at proficient. And instead of restating other people's words, I chose to, like I did last year, just to take out excerpts from the four evaluations that were submitted, and that is what is in my summary. So, if you will allow me, I will just read those excerpts from, again, the four evaluations. "While I know attempting to both teach and learn during a global pandemic was unprecedented, I feel we did the best we could to help all we could. My main concerns regarding this time is the lack of consistency per educator, per child, some asynchronous and some synchronous, some hybrid, in-person and remote only. Some students thrived online coursework and others suffered. I also feel we started off great with communication, but started to peter out as the year went on and into the new school year. Maybe a parent-focused group going forward on what kind of engagements and communication would reach them most efficiently. The Superintendent's capacity, capacity to manage the operations of the district, including all financial components, has only increased during her time as Superintendent. This has been aided by the hiring of a very effective business manager and the longevity, longevity of her senior administrators, the Assistant Superintendent, the Director of Student Services, and the School Principals. The Superintendent has consistently made excellent decisions as a member of the School Building Committee, which enhance the outcome of the project and its ability to serve not only the staff and students to be educated, but also the community as a whole. The state data continues to demonstrate an uneven performance by Wareham students in a number of areas. The Superintendent should be commended for leading the district from fully remote to hybrid to full in-person instruction over the 2020-2021 school year. She helped ensure the safety of students and staff. She negotiated in good faith with different unions to attain agreement around working conditions, and she guaranteed that students and staff had access to technologies needed for all forms and models of learning. The Superintendent has empowered administrators to set expectations around behaviors and safety, and to develop and execute effective plans and procedures. Last year's budget process ran smoothly as she proposed and oversaw a budget that met the needs of the students. Dr. Shaverhood has worked tirelessly in a professional manner to be sure that the needs of the students are being met. I have, have observed her handle many situations with authority and respect, whether it be with a student or employee. I believe that the collaboration between the Superintendent and administrators is key to student success. It is apparent also that there is collaboration between administrators of each building, encouraged by the Superintendent, another very important component to student success that hasn't always existed. Managing the expenses of the district became even more complicated during this time for many reasons. The School Committee has received monthly reports and has been kept up to date on the changing needs of the district and the effect this has had on the budget. Dr. Shaverhood makes herself available seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. This is not a requirement, but rather a reflection on her dedication to Wareham Public Schools." So, this year, on this evaluation, we will vote only on the compilation report, as in the past. One second, Mary, okay. And we, in the past, we have also voted on a, a pay increase, and that will not happen tonight, because that is part of the contract that was approved by the School Committee earlier tonight. Go ahead.
So, I would just like to explain why I did not submit an evaluation, and it's two reasons. One, it, I see, in my personal opinion, that it's going against the School Committee policy that we have, where we had a, a district form that we filled out for the evaluation. And also, because I feel that if I said anything negative, that it would be felt a type of retaliation. So, I just wanted to explain why I didn't submit an, an evaluation.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything they want to add? Certainly, that was my compilation. If, if anyone else wants to add anything else? No? And Dr. Shaverhood, I would give you the opportunity to. Okay. So, at this time, unless anyone else has anything to add, I will just ask you to approve the compilation, you know, the summary of the evaluations. Every member has been provided a copy of all of the evaluations, as had the Superintendent.
So moved?
To approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Okay. The only other thing left on the agenda is forty-eight-hour business. Does anyone have any forty-eight-hour business? All right. Then I would just remind everyone that our next meeting is December 2nd. It's the Budget Public Hearing at the Middle School. Thank you.
Do we need a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.